May I have your attention please? The Halton City Council Meeting from May 19, 2008 will come to order. Our prayer and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Richard Hutchison.
Appreciate Chaplain Hamlin from the Police Department coming in and offering the invocation tonight. Chaplain Hamlin?
And I can't do that with just being real short because council meetings are notorious for being long. But I can't help it because tonight you're swearing back into service again. And there's a favorite story that I have come across about a Navy maneuver. And they went out on the North Seaboard of the United States and they went out with a number of ships. And they're accustomed to having fog, but it was very thick. And they were supposed to be silent running and no radio traffic. And sure enough, they lost sight of one another, which was not supposed to happen. Nonetheless, there's this big battleship out there and he doesn't know where the others are. And one of the people in the conning tower runs back to the cabin and says, "There's a light up there." They said, "Well, they're in the wrong place. Signal them back and tell them to move." So they sent the signal out. And shortly, just a few minutes later, the light began to flash back towards the cruiser. And it said, "Move us, move to your port three degrees." And I said, "Guy doesn't understand." Send him a message and tell him we're a cruiser. Message went back out. Light comes back from the fixed position. It says, "Move to the port by three degrees." And sure enough, he says, "Well, by golly, just tell them people who I am. I'm the ship's commander and you move your ship." Light signal came back from the stationary light, "And I'm the keeper of the lighthouse. Move to the port three degrees." And what's important about that is to realize that as council and city employees serve the citizens of Halton City, that we need to hear and to listen and be responsive. Sometimes we need to see and other times we need to hear. There's a man by the name of Lee Brace that wrote a statement in a book called Management of Biblical Approach. And he says this, "I have discovered that if you train a man, he will be what you are. But if you serve him, the sky's the limit as to what he can become." And so as we think in terms of serving others and serving our community, I somewhat cautiously charge our council to get out there and to serve and to get it done. You know, the scripture says in a verse here in the Book of Matthew, the Bible says this, "But it shall not be so among you; but whosoever will be great among you, let him be your minister; and whosoever will be chief among you, let him be your servant, even as the son of man came not to be ministered unto, but to minister and to give his life a ransom for many." Let's look to the Lord in prayer. My Father, we thank you for this evening and what it means to the city of Halton City. We thank you that these men have faithfully served in the past and we're grateful for their willingness to desire and their desire to continue to serve. And we'd ask that you bless them, give them insight as they seek to do that which is best for our community. We thank you for them and we lift them up to you and we'll pray for them in Jesus' name. Amen. Could remain standing and face the flag for our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me take this opportunity to thank everyone who's here and everyone who's out there. And before you get up to try to adjust your television set unless you've already been trying to do it, I am not Bill Lanford. Bill Lanford had a family matter he had to tend to tonight. I'm Dale Clark, current mayor pro temp. And we're going to move through the proceedings now that you know who all the main players are. Our first item of business is the oath of office for the new city council members placed three, four, five, and six. And doing the, administering the oath tonight would be our own Judge Ray Ojeski, municipal Halton City Judge.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Would all four of y'all follow me down? That's right.
Mayor Pro Tem and council, it is my honor and my privilege to be with you tonight to administer the oath of office for city council places three, four, five, and six. To each of you, congratulations on your uncontested reelections to this city council. At this time, if I could have everybody please raise their right hand. And if you would at this time, if you would like to grab a copy of the Bible to hold with you while you're making your oath at this time, I think we have, and then we can sort of pass them down as you would like to. All right. I please state your names. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of... Of the city of Halton City. Of the state of Texas. And will to the best of my abilities preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations to each of you.
If you family members want to get to the center, I'm going to be presenting each council person right there in the middle and hand them their certificate. So Blakely, if you want to come on up to the front here.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that as a result of an unopposed candidacy and council election, Dale Clark was duly elected as council member placed four. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that as a result of an unopposed candidacy and council election, Richard Hutchison was duly elected as council member placed five. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that as a result of an unopposed candidacy and council election, Tim Reese was duly elected as council member placed six.
And council, you may now come back and take your place on the dice. Thank you, Judge.
Our next item is the Mayor Pro Tem term consideration and/or action regarding the election of the Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Clark, we have several traditions that we've been following in Halton City, one of which is that a Mayor Pro Tem always gets to complete and finish a meeting. And I think that's a great tradition because the Mayor Pro Tem needs to be trained in leadership. Because we can't always have our dependency on just one person. It's really good to train different people to be leaders. And so there's another tradition that we tend to pass the Mayor Pro Tem to different people for the different years that are there. So I'd like to make a motion that Mayor Pro Tem Clark finish this meeting, complete this meeting today, but effective at the end of the meeting after it has been adjourned that Councilmember Rich Hutchison will be the new Mayor Pro Tem for the next year.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Branson?
I would like to second that motion.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion and a second for Richard Hutchison to be the new Mayor Pro Tem. I'm ready for y'all to take action if there's no more discussion. Are there any more nominations? Not from this group, I doubt it. Mr. Hutchison, are you willing to accept the position?
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir. Got to get everyone to register their vote, please. And somebody didn't get the names right, but I'm voting in Bill's place. There we go. As a city council member, I do get to vote. I don't lose that vote.
Can I make a comment?
Mr. Sutton? I just want to say that Mayor Pro Tem Clark has distinguished himself in Halton City. He has really taken the job of Mayor Pro Tem seriously. And I, as one council member, appreciate what he's done. He has taken it to the next level by his involvement with TML. And he's now a chairman of the Committee on the TML. And I think that's very important for our community relations with other cities in Texas. And so I think that this is tremendous, that he is going on and continuing leadership in areas that are going to really benefit this city. So I ask for your support for both Rich Hutchison, the new Mayor Pro Tem, but also Councilmember Dale Clark as he continues responsibilities in TML and other organizations that are bigger than this city and that are very, very important.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have announcements and events. We have a NTRLS Library Board Member winner Bonnie Richards. And I think the award's going to be presented by Leslie Smith, Director of the Library. Ma'am?
Actually, I usually don't need a microphone because I'm so loud. Actually, actually, I'm not presenting an award. I'm just making the announcement because this was presented a few weeks ago. As you said, I'm Leslie Smith from the library. This is Allison Long. Raise your hand, Allison.
That would be me.
Okay. And would you like us to get together here? And Bonnie Richards. Bonnie, would you raise your hand? We want to share with the city council and with the residents of Halton City, an honor that was bestowed upon Ms. Richards, one of our very, very longtime library board members. I would like to give a few details first in explanation about what this award is. NTRLS, as you said, Dale, is North Texas Regional Library System, which is a consortia that we are a member of. And it consists of 75 libraries. Last year, Bonnie Richards nominated Allison Long. Allison, raise your hand.
That would be me again.
For the Library Employee of the Year. And of course, she won, no surprise. And then Allison Long, this year, true to form, nominated Bonnie Richards. Bonnie, would you raise your hand? Okay. For the Library Board Member of the Year. And of course, she won. And I've asked Allison to come and read her nomination application because I think it was very succinct and tells a lot about Bonnie. Ms. Allison?
Well, many of you already know Bonnie. She's been a member, a citizen of this city for, before it was probably even Halton City. And she's been a very active citizen in many, many ways. But this particular award was awarded for someone who's done above and beyond. And that is our Bonnie. And the nomination letter reads, "Bonnie Richards is and has always been a valuable member of our library family. She has held a position on the library board for countless years. She was instrumental in reorganizing the Friends of the Halton City Public Library, of which now she holds the position of Secretary Treasurer. Bonnie rarely if ever misses a regional library system meeting where she represents the library and reports to the library board the issues discussed. She can be counted on to attend city council meetings," here she is, "and reports to the library what has taken place. This particularly is important concerning the upcoming new library building, of which she campaigned aggressively. Bonnie is definitely a hands-on library advocate. Indoors or outdoors, if there's a library function, you'll see her there. She has assisted with library card registrations at various city events such as the Fire Department Open House, the annual Spring Fest, Northeast Recycle Days, the Halton High School Homecoming Parade, and Community Tree Lighting Event in December. At events conducted in the library, you will find her helping the children complete a craft project or serving refreshments. Bonnie is an invaluable asset to the children's librarians during the summer reading program, of which kicks off in two weeks. One week from this coming Saturday at 2:00, come to the library. Or the occasional Space Day Program. As a retired teacher, she's an advocate of literacy. She contributes memorial books regularly and very generously. Bonnie volunteers as an ESL teacher in our community, and we can always depend on her to help with the annual book sale. At our yearly school public librarians luncheon, she contributes not only her time and service helping to organize this event, but she's also taken upon the responsibility of planning the menu, and she has been known to even cook all the food. And that's a lot. Bonnie is Halton City Public Library's very own cheerleader. She lends support and encouragement to all of our staff members. She's even been known to bring in the unexpected tree. As a library board member, she is very involved in the Christmas appreciation luncheon, which is prepared and served to the library staff members. Bonnie is a keen understanding of the importance of maintaining morale. She makes it a point of greeting each staff member by name when she comes into the library building and is always, makes each new employee feel welcome. If Bonnie Richards' love for our library was not evident enough, she's had a bronze memorial sculpture constructed in memory of her late husband Jake and placed inside our building. Education and literacy have always held a place of high importance in their home. This is the first sculpture Halton City Public Library has ever received, and it is the first sculpture that the city of Halton City ever received, even before the one at the Fire Department. Bonnie is also on board to assist with the landscaping and outdoor artistic designs of the new library building. To her credit, she's also a member of the Halton City Garden Club. The staff of the Halton City Public Library would like to honor Bonnie Richards with the Randy Schaefer Award for all that she does for us. Our library would not be the same without her.
Thank you very much. It is very, very easy to be nice to quality people. And that's what we have here in our library and in Halton City. Thank you.
Congratulations, Bonnie. I don't think there's a time that I don't go in there, I see Bonnie. Our next item is, we have some more announcements by our Assistant City Manager Chuck, Mr. Chuck Barnett.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Clark. Reminder that the Crud Cruiser will be in Halton City this Saturday, May 24th, for the collection of household hazardous waste. The hours will be from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. The location is IESI Convenience Center, which is located at 2120 Minutes Drive. Please remember to provide proof of residency with your driver's license and most recent water bill. Shredding services for personal documents will also be available and at no charge. For any additional information, please call 817-222-7767. The Halton City Crime Watch Captain's Association will be providing VIN, which is your vehicle identification number. And that'll be etching on Saturday, May 31st, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 5600 Denton Highway. This is also a free service to our public. And the eighth annual Texas Writers Month Club deadline is getting close, Saturday, May 31st. The categories include short story and poetry. For information and contest guidelines, please contact the library at 817-222-7786. And I didn't have this in my notes, but the kickoff of the summer reading club begins next...
May 31st.
May 31st.
At 2:00.
At 2:00. You heard it here. Yes, I will. I need to learn to read. I'm glad I, I'm sorry, I said that. And one additional important message, the city council's next regular scheduled meeting will be Monday, June 9th. The city offices will be closed next Monday, May 26th, in observance of Memorial Day. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Chuck? If not, I do. I do. Would you give us the definition, sir, of hazardous waste? And is it limited to only hazardous waste?
Hazardous waste is such as you take a paint can and you take the lid off and you allow it to dry up and you can bring that out for disposal. We're not accepting tires at this location for this one. Anything, any kind of fluids you have around the house, which could be either pesticides and pesticides, or it could be some of your cleaning agents that you have within your house. Yes, sir, you can take those there and they'll dispose them.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is reports, our monthly financial report for April 30, 2008. And I think that'd be Director Welch.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, members of the council. And closed in your packet for your review and consideration is the monthly financial report for the first seven months of the fiscal year, that being through April 30. I do endeavor to be brief in my presentation and remarks. I just want to talk about a couple of things. You may notice in the back of the report, the usual information for the employment and for the court records was not updated this month, and I apologize about that. But we didn't have the information completely ready at the time. And so we will have that updated and it'll, for the next month's meeting, we'll have all of the information, both the information that should have been here this time and the other. But we thought we would go ahead and get the rest of the financial report out in a timely fashion to you. I want to talk about a couple of issues yet that I just want to keep you apprised of, one of which is one that was rather unexpected. We've been moving along fairly well through the fiscal year. And as I stated in the report, there's been a remarkable stability in our sales tax collections. I've been watching the rolling 12-month average as it moved along, and it was on a stable to slightly increasing trend until the May payment came in. And the May payment came in about 5% beneath last year. Now, I don't intend to spread any alarm about this, other than the fact that we've been going through a long stretch of several months with no decreases. And so this did catch me a bit off guard. The timing of getting this type of payment in May while we're trying to develop a degree of confidence in our projections for next fiscal year is truly, in technical terminology, lousy. But we're going to be watching this. And sometimes these things happen, they can just be an anomaly for a month. We're going to be watching. By next month, I may have a better answer as to what happened with the May collections. But I just wanted to mention, because I had talked at length about it in there and why it'd come up at an awkward time for us in the budget process. The other thing I want to talk with the council about is to wrap up some information about both the Water and Sewer Fund and the Crime District. I think I had been talking about these two funds, is needing some action on the part of finance and the departments working together to address some budgetary issues. We have made some changes in the CCPD such that it will be back on track to be where we want it to be in terms of the fund balance by the end of next fiscal year, like we originally planned. We've made some adjustments. We've economized in some places and shifted some expenses, and it's back on track. And the Water and Sewer Fund, I've been working, and we're still working with Public Works. We believe that we're going to close the last $400,000 of that gap. As I had written to y'all last month and in this report, that we had addressed about $1 million of the $1.4 million gap. And we now have a plan that we believe will capture the remainder of the $400,000 that needs to be captured over the balance of the year. But I'm going to tell you, if we have very many days of 97 degrees and no precipitation in a row, the job may get a little easier between now and the end of the year.
Thank you, sir. This is an action item. Do we have any discussion? Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just a quick question on CCPD. It was the expense side of the ledger that was adjusted for those adjustments, right? Not the revenue side?
Yes, sir. The revenue side is pretty captive to the economy in terms of its almost exclusively sales tax collections. And so, no, we didn't, we did not move any money into it, and we didn't change any assumptions on the revenue side. We just found ways to economize and make it work from the expenditure side of the ledger.
Okay, thanks.
Any more discussion? I'm ready for a motion to approve the monthly financial report for the month ending April 30th. Councilmember Hutchison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I make a motion that we approve the monthly financial report as given.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cabano?
That's for a second, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to approve the financial report ending April 30th. Will you register your votes, please? And I believe it's unanimous. Next, we have capital improvement report, status report.
Thank you, mayor and council. Typically, Mr. Fain has been here to give this to you, so I'm going to give it to you. And this will be brief. You've got the report in front of you. Let me just highlight a couple of things. There is a couple of errors I need to clarify, and I'll go with Mr. Fain to fix this while it's posted on the website. But in the Water and Sewer portion, the Wall Avenue overhead storage tank, he states in here that the bid, the council awarded this on June 12th. Since June 12th, hasn't happened yet. Obviously, that's wrong. It was last week, on May 12th. So we'll get that fixed, as well as the next project after that, the Halton Road Water Main Project from Stanley Keller to the Cotton Belt Railroad tracks. That's, again, a misnomer, but those are needed projects, and we briefed the council on those at the last meeting. And the drainage issues, Little Fossil Creek, there is some movement on that, mainly just from a right-of-way standpoint. Our right-of-way consultant has been working and moving in that realm. Properties have not been purchased yet, but the initial letters are being worked on and being sent out to those respective property owners. The last item I want to address is the Big Fossil Creek Erosion Control Project. Usually, the citizens have heard me address this in an item that we've called Flooding and Erosion Issues. And we've moved it to this since a contract has been awarded to ARC Contracting to erect the Gabian Wall. The Notice of Proceed was issued, taking effect May 9th. The project should be finished sometime in October. So far, it was down there today. They've got part of the first row already in. It's taking a little bit longer because the rock that's down there in the creek is a bit harder. In some places, it's harder than concrete, if you can imagine that. So it's very, very hard. But they have trenched it, a good part of it, it started on the far west side, and it's, right now, they're working right behind the Caraway Home, laying the first row. Once the first row gets, they'll put the whole first row in, and then they'll start going up from there. So once the first row gets in, it'll start going a little bit quicker. But then they'll be also drilling the tiebacks at the same time, too. So that's going on now as well. So it's, they've got two track loaders down there and some other stuff. It's very... It's very impressive seeing them work in the 10 days they've been down there so far. With that, I'll take any questions regarding the CIP report. Mayor, there is no action needed on this item.
Correct. Thank you, sir. Our next item for business of the consent agenda, we have two items, four and five, and bear with me for a second.
Chuck was going to update the council on the library. I'm sorry. Well, it's not in the CIP.
Oh, okay.
We do have a short thing to give you status on the library.
Thank you.
I apologize, Chuck.
That's all right, Tom. Thank you very much.
Yeah, who needs a library?
Yeah, who needs a library right now, huh? Right?
I wouldn't say that right now.
This is a... Let me just give you a brief presentation. You've seen this picture. This isn't exactly what the library's going to look like, but it's pretty close to the artist's rendering. If you...the flagpole won't be here, it'll be over in this area, right here. And then, we're also preparing a space there for the statue. We're going to have a second flag over in that area. And what you see right in this area, there will be a conglomerate of landscape right in this area to accent this curvature that we have of the library that goes around this way, which is the children's area. This is an aerial photograph. I apologize, this was taken March 27th. They are to do a flyover every 30 days and give us a new one. They did not provide that to me today when I went in there to look at the site. What you have, you're going to see some pictures that relates to this. Let me go back real quick. I pushed the wrong button, sorry. You're going to see pictures that shows all this concrete here, which is the parking lot. It's all poured and complete. You're going to see pictures that shows the drive approaches, the two drive approaches going to the site. Those have also been complete. We have also completed a linkage of a sidewalk that comes along here and then goes across the bridge, and then goes all the way up to Halton Road and O Denton Road up in that area. So, that...this portion of that sidewalk is complete. There's a giant berm out there right now to which we'll be doing irrigation landscaping on. And then, as you come down this area, there's going to be a stairway right in here, because you have a drop from this point to this point of approximately 10 feet. And so, in order to make that elevation work, what we've done is we've come back and we've put a stairway right in here, and they laid the forms today in preparation to do the pour, probably beginning next week. Street lights, light poles, this is with TXU. They've already done the trenching in there. We're working with Encore to bring the electrical cable in there with the conduit. TXU, I mean, excuse me, Encore, I have to go in there, I have to pull the poles. When they do that, then they're going to go in there, they're going to be putting the new poles in, set those, and they got to take the electricity and they got to convert it over there. And then, the cabling, the phone, and the data, and the fire alarm, and everything you see, and for the building security, all of that is, I'd say, about 95% complete. The cabling, we were out there today, there was two crews working within the ceiling, and they were doing those drops. And what we've been talking about is trying to close the building envelope. That means to make sure the building is totally secure from weather, so that we can get in there and start doing some work. And you're going to see some pictures that are going to indicate how far along they are. And then, we had the exterior panels, that is, the metal panels that are around the top. Those are 95% complete. And sheet rock is almost complete, not in all the office space, but in the main portion. And we're...already have started taping bedding in those areas. And the parking lot and the drive approaches, I just indicated to you, those are primarily complete at this time, and they're going to be pouring the rest of the sidewalks beginning of next week. This shows you what I was just talking to you about a while ago. This was poured this last weekend. These are brand-new saw cuts into the parking area. Your front door is right in here. You can see the grading that's still going to be done in this area. This is the area where we will be doing the landscaping, and this area will be graded down to about five feet below than what you see right now. And that's going to be a nautilus that we're going to design in there. We'll put pond cypress in that area, and it'll go into a lower area of gravel to hold the water. This is the...this was also poured this last week. Again, if you kind of look in here, you can see the striations. That's where the saw cuts occurred. And that is the backside of the building, where you have the drop pickup and the drop off for the books. This is going to the interior. And you look at the interior of the building, you can see where the tape and bedding has been going on. Guys out there working, these were taken today. We had several crews out there, which have been working. And you can see the glass area right here. Again, this overlooks what we call our water feature, looking to the due north. And this is...this area right in here is where we'll have the employee break area, and that's also Leslie's Bar and Grill. The three cubicles you see right in here, these are the study areas. As you can see, again, they've already been taped and bedded, and we're getting preparation for painting for next week. Again, finishing up, this is the curvature as you come into the building, which identifies the children's area. It's pretty exciting. The air conditioning and heating, all the ductwork has been completed. As a matter of fact, they've already tested it. We plan to crank that baby up next week, and they'll be doing that as they're in the interior, and they'll be painting. And one of the things I want to show you right now, there's a lot of activity which is happening into the site. When we drove up there today and looking at the site, there was a lot of cars out there. There's a lot of activity around, there's a lot of activity on the inside, again, with more tape and bedding. And I've got my two newest project managers, which are on site. I think they're discussing how large my office is. Probably someone else giving the announcements next time y'all meet. In summary, the landscaping irrigation, we have been meeting with the architect, the landscape architect on the site. We've tried to utilize as much of the vegetation and the trees that we have within the tree farm. We've got some unique areas, a large site to which we're going to have to try to plant. And then, the irrigation is to begin the week of June 15th. So, we've already started looking at the design plans on that, so we can start doing the order for the heads and the irrigation parts. The interior signage, we did go out for bids on that, working with Leslie and her staff, identifying the numerous number of signs you have on the inside for your restrooms, the janitorial closet, the computer room, the reference desk. It just goes on and on and on. And looking at that, we had to go back and rethink the number of signs we're going to have, and we've gone back out, and I've got three bids coming on that. Looks like we're going to be within our budget, maybe even a little bit below. The exterior sign has to do with the banners. And the banners, Leslie's going to be working on what's going to be our, what we call our wild feature as you come up to Spring Lake. The phones and computer installation, that's being handled by Scott Joyce, our IT director. The painting should begin Thursday, I believe, yes. We'll start painting in the interior on Thursday, particularly in the restrooms, and then they'll be moving to the larger areas. And the ceiling, we're working on the ceiling. There is a cable pull that we've been doing, and that is what they were doing today. We had two crews working on that. And then, they'll be looking at putting in the ceiling tiles after that. We've moved up...I've already mentioned our HVAC testing. We've moved up our meetings with the contractor on a weekly basis. These were important to make sure we stay on schedule. He indicated to me today we're still on schedule, but we're not taking any chances, because we've also moved up to have weekly meetings now with the subs to make sure we're on schedule here. Your future dates that you have, we've talked about July 15th. That's the target date we have for the completion of the building. Actually, our contract identifies that July 18th is when they're supposed to hand over the keys of the building. And we're doing our punch list as we go. August 1st is going to be a busy time about that, about around August 1st, August 5th, you'll...we'll have the arrival of the furniture. That's already in the make. You've already approved that. That's being constructed and getting ready to do a move, and then also bring in the furniture on site. The final grading, that's going to be in preparation when we do our irrigation, also our landscaping. Computers and phones, June 1st. The library will be closed August 4th until about September 5th. We'll have a cornerstone celebration a week prior. The grand opening is scheduled for September 5th. We've got an official ribbon cutting, which we'll do on September 6th. It's going to be a very busy time. I know there's a lot of interest in looking at the site. I know it's pretty exciting when we go over there, but there's a lot going on in there. When you see the number of cars out in the parking lot, that means there's a lot of crews that we're pushing with the subs to make sure they're in there doing their work. It's real busy, and it can be dangerous. The vice president requested that. Of all Shaw requested that I would head up any tours that go through there, we restricted those to Friday, to when the crews are all taking their breaks at the same time, so we can make sure nobody gets injured. I know everybody wants to see it. I'll try to get you in there as soon as possible. We have to restrict the times and number of people that go in there. Hope you understand. Any questions?
Chuck, can we have Tom wear his hat during the tour?
That was actually his own personal hat, had his name on it.
Okay, that needs to be worn, Tom.
Do we have any more questions?
You have to...you go in there, you have to wear a hat, too, though.
Yes.
Everybody has to wear a hat.
You do have to have a hard hat.
Everybody's got to have hard hats.
Yeah.
OSHA's been out, and they've been checking on us. Some of you may not need hard hats.
Yeah, does a hard head count?
No exceptions. Chuck, refresh my memory on when we're doing the cornerstone. I think it's the 21st, 6:30?
I think it's 21st, 26th, somewhere around in there.
Yeah, it may be the 26th now. I'll have to check my records, too. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say, on behalf of the council, I think I speak for all of them, we do appreciate your slide shows, especially in color.
Thank you. I'm trying to train and teach other people, but it's been very difficult. I'm certain you can appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Now, we're back on track. And our next...our next item is the consent agenda, and we have four items. We have the minutes and an ordinance. The consent agenda is considered to be a self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless they are removed from the consent agenda upon the request of a council member or a citizen, so request. Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda? Chair is ready for a motion. Ms. Branson?
Thank you, mayor. That we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion that we accept. Ms. Reese?
That's a second.
I have a motion and a second that we accept the consent agenda. And I'd like to say that item 5 is ordinance 2008-01203, and it's to approve the existing utmost financial agreement to provide a 5% finance fee, and it's the second reading on that. I'm ready for your pleasure. And it's unanimous. Thank you. The next item is the public hearing, visitors and citizen forum. Bear with me on this one. This time is set aside for any persons having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak to the council. All comments must be directed towards the presiding officer, rather than an individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form or presented by the speaker, and must refrain from personal attacks towards any individual. A three-to-six-minute time limit will be granted, six minutes with prior notification and three minutes without prior notification. Do we have any speakers tonight? Thank you, and move right on. Our next item is item 6, boards and commissions, resignations of board members. Do we have any resignations? And I see none. We'll move on. Item 7 is appointments, reappointments of board missions and commissioners. Ms. Reese?
Thank you. I would like to reappoint Ms. Bonnie Richards to the library board, and it's with great honor and pride, because I know she has done a fabulous job.
Do we have a second? I don't need one, okay.
Yep.
The motion before us is Ms. Reese's appointment, Bonnie Richards, to the library So, register, please. Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I have several appointments and reappointments that I would like to make tonight, so I think what I'll do is I'll make...I'll announce all of them, and we'll just vote on all of them at the same time, if that's okay with everybody, okay?
Are they all replaced, or any of them new?
No, one of them is...one of them is new, but most of them are reappointments. How would you like to do this, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Let's go ahead and take them as a whole, if we don't have any discussion. If there's any discussion on the new one, we may single that one out.
All right. I'll ignore the council person, place 7 over here. For the beautification board, I'd like to reappoint Bertie Blocker at 3733 Eastridge here in Halton City. For the crime control and prevention district board, I'd like to reappoint Ryan Murphy at 4200 Northern Cross here in the city. I'd like to...for the fire services board, reappoint Valerie Deering, who is my appointment last time. For the library board, I'd like to reappoint Patsy Sullivan at 4613 Starlight Drive. And thank you for being here tonight, Patsy, in support of Bonnie Richards. For the park and recreation board, I'd like to reappoint Paul Strong at 5413 Mack Road. For the planning and zoning commission, I'd like to reappoint Mike Stewart at 3521 Larry Street. For the sexually oriented board of appeals, I'd like to reappoint Norm Kingsley at 5305 Fossil Drive. And for the zoning board of adjustments, the ZBA, the...my appointment would be Ms. Angela Derogowski, and she is my new appointment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sutton?
Yeah, one of them in there, Ryan Murphy, if he's the one I'm thinking about, I had lunch with him several weeks ago, and he may have moved out of the city.
He informed me that he is still working in the city here.
Oh, is he?
He is still here in the city, yes.
I think he still lives here.
Yeah.
He is working outside the city.
I'm sorry.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure about.
He still lives here.
Okay, great. Fantastic.
That's my understanding. He can move at any time, but...
What Mr. Mur said is exactly right. He does still live here in the city. That's what Ryan told me.
Great. That's all I wanted to make sure of.
Do we need to discuss? Evidently not.
Well, yes.
Maybe we do.
I want to thank Angela for serving as the alternate in place 7 before being whisked away to a permanent position. Thanks, Angela. I really do appreciate your attendance and everything. It just goes to show that when you really stick your heels in and learn something, that you move on to a more permanent spot, much to my dismay.
And being...and being the liaison to the ZBA, I have recognized her expertise and her professionalism. Therefore, she deserves a more permanent position, so that's why I want to appoint her.
Yes, she does. Yes, she does. I agree.
Thank you both. I'm now ready for a vote for approval, please. Register your vote. And that's unanimous.
I mean, it was obvious. She showed it.
Do we have any more appointments? Thank you. The next item is attendance requirements, and we have one. Our mayor's not here tonight. He had a family personal business. Ms. Branson?
I would like to move that we excuse Mayor Lanford from the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson?
That would be for a second, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
We have a motion and a second that we approve Bill's absence tonight. Would you register your vote, please? Thank you very much. I want to say it's been a pleasure to serve you all tonight. Oh, yeah, we have cake and punch in the back, and everyone is invited. And with that being said, we have no more business, and this meeting is adjourned.